Good evening and welcome to the special council meeting of February 13th. Let's call it to order and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call will show that all the council members are present. Nice to have Councilmember Reed back from the frozen tundra of the East Coast. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in affidavit of posting? Ragman Reed. And we'll now move on to public time, public expression. If it's not on the agenda and you want to chat about it for three minutes, five minutes of your group, come on up.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Hammond, Nine Iron Springs Road. And I wanted to make a comment about the property at 2011, or 2001 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. I noticed in the agenda last time that there were negotiations going on for, with the owner over this property. And I just wanted to say that I am a strong supporter of the town buying the property. I think it's a real opportunity for the town, even though it's this kind of strange little, you know, site and still polluted to some degree. I think we can see it as a real opportunity. And, you know, personally, I think an alternative transportation hub would be amazing use of that lot. And it's such a visible part of the downtown that I think it's really important that we do something that reflects the town's values there. So you definitely have the community support in that, in your, you know, as we move through the process of evaluating different uses. And I also wrote an email to you guys earlier today that you could look at, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before the next speaker steps forward, Garrett, I know we live under a tight budget, but what's the store with the lighting here? Can we get those 360-watt bulbs back in there?
Turns out it's an electrical issue, but it'll be resolved by your next meeting.
You are the best. Sir?
Hi, I'm Neil Kraus. I am a local citizen here and I just want to say that I support the idea of the town council also considering alternatives for the use of that property. I appreciate your efforts to make good use of it. I would hate to, I know that it's no longer under consideration for, as a gas station, it's in a great location for some good use. And I just want to let you know that I appreciate your considering some other alternative, the possibility of purchasing it by the town and putting it to good use.
Anybody else for open time?
Jody Timms, 290 Cascade Drive. And I also just wanted to add my voice to the enthusiastic community that would love to be in dialogue with whomever the right folks would be to discuss the future of that property. It seems to me there's, I don't know that much about how some of these things go, but seems like a nonprofit might be able to buy it, the town might be able to buy it, maybe the county could, or some open space possibility. I've got a number of ideas swirling around, but it would all depend on so many factors. But I just wanted to be sure that you all were well aware that there's plenty of us in the community that fought to keep something out of there. And we would definitely love to be part of the conversation of putting something new and creative and useful and exciting there, whether it's generating, producing, if it needs to be or not. I was curious whether or not the town currently does own any property that it leases in any way or uses as revenue generating. I don't even have any idea if there's a sort of precedent for that. But I would love to, as I say, be part of the conversation. And I think there are many people who would like to be part of it, who some of us could rally to come forward and share ideas. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jody. Michael?
I apologize if there's a little interruption. Michael McIntosh, with the designation of seven other parcels, what about including this in our higher-density housing? So we can incorporate some sort of, I'm sorry, we can incorporate some sort of green space with it, but actually put the housing for a walkable community right in the middle of our town instead of on the far reaches as currently designated? And I hope that might be looked at. Thank you.
Anybody else for open time?
Good evening. My name is Sharka Wagnar, and I've lived in Fairfax for about two years now. I'm originally from Czech Republic, so my accent, I hope you understand me.
Your accent is so nice, we're going to belabor the point and make you talk for about a half an hour.
Great. So I moved here from San Francisco. I'm in love with Fairfax. And unfortunately, past year since July 2013, I've noticed really strange activity in our skies. And I noticed that the air quality has got kind of bad and toxic. And I've got a lot of material to show that our skies are being basically modified artificially. And it's just creating toxic air for my children. I have two daughters and I'm quite concerned for their health. I have a lot of proof and a lot of material to show that our skies are being sprayed with some sort of material which expands and that creates complete whiteout. I've done some research. I found out that this is called geoengineering. It's real, and a lot of people are starting to notice it. I also saw that Monsanto has bought weather modification company. It's real, it was in Forbes. So I'm curious if Monsanto is modifying our weather without our consent. And as I said, I'm very concerned for my children. And with the whole issue around GMO not being labeled, I'm not sure who to trust right now, and I need someone to help me to really find out what's going on. So I would like some help maybe from Fairfax. Also, there is Maui Clear Sky Ordinance. Maui already declares Clean Sky Ordinance. So it's possible to declare for Fairfax that this such activity is not allowed and we don't give a consent. And yeah, that's pretty much my point. I have a lot of proof. And I really want some explanation. You know, I deserve it as an American citizen. Thank you for your help anyway, I will really appreciate it.
Well, please forward the information that you've gathered on to our town clerk, Michelle.
Okay.
And she will be able to send it on to us.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Other open time? We'll move on to our first and only public hearing matter. Garrett? Jim?
Excuse me. I live within 500 feet of one of the areas planned for rezoning, so I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
John, you have a quick statement?
Um, yes, I guess, in the previous month, yeah, I'm fine. Okay, I don't have to recuse myself.
No, if, as some people recall during the last meeting, Councilmember Reed recused himself from the vote on the moratorium. That's different from this rezoning, even though it's about the same parcels, and so there is an exemption here. He is fine, he does not have a conflict tonight for this rezoning.
Okay, it's good to hear. I mean, it's a corner of a lot.
Jim, take us through this if you'd be so kind.
Okay, I'm going to start by giving you the big picture before we get into some of the details. If you recall, back in April, April 4th of 2012, the town council adopted the new 2010-2030 general plan for the town, including a mitigated NAGDEC California Environmental Quality Act review of that document. At that time, in the new general plan, in the land use element, there was included a general plan map and a zoning map. And once again, the town council adopted the general plan in April of 2012. And in that general plan that was adopted, it included a zoning map. The policy decision to include that zoning map, I might add, was made at that date by your body. The steps we're taking tonight is procedural to codify that action. You cannot replace a zoning map as part of the zoning ordinance without replacing it with a zoning ordinance. So that's what we're here to do tonight, is to codify those aspects of the general plan, the zoning map in the general plan, and codify that action so that we can now use the zoning map. This is your first reading tonight. As you know, there's a second reading by law that'll be held, if you go forward tonight on this, on March 5th. And the ordinance by law then would go in 30 days after that, either April 3rd or 4th. So, there are basically a handful of zones that are being affected through this new map. As we all know, it's calling for the elimination of CH to CC. And there'll be a subsequent step that we will be coming back to you with on amending the language that is in the central commercial zone. Our code for both the current highway commercial and the central commercial is a very archaic way of listing actual types of businesses that are allowed by right and types of businesses that are allowed with what's called a conditional use permit. It's a very old-fashioned way of doing things, and in the changing world of businesses, it ends up restricting certain types of businesses and that maybe should not be restricted. So we'll be revisiting those things that are allowed in the central commercial by right versus under a conditional use permit. I want to point out one omission in the staff report tonight, on page two of the staff report, where it mentions those zones affected. Second line, second page, should read service commercial parentheses CS, comma, planned district development parentheses PDD, and public domain. That was an omission. Second page, staff report. I can verify that we did notice all the properties next to the PDD. The public notice included the language, including the PDD. Second, refinement to the language in the ordinance to further articulate exactly which parcels are being rezoned to PDD. If on the first page of the ordinance you look at the second to the last whereas, second line on the right side, it says property commonly known as 2626 Sir Francis Drake, and then it goes on to list two parcel numbers, it should read 2626 and 2600 Sir Francis Drake. And then lastly, in the addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC that you're being...
Which page was the second?
I'm sorry, the first page of the ordinance.
First page, okay.
Second to the last whereas, just include after 2626 and 2600.
Okay.
Next housekeeping item on...
Just may I add just one housekeeping item that... I know it's buffing up the Titanic here, but when we state things like Public Resources Code Section 21,000 et cetera, there's no comma after the 21,000 or the 15,000 or...
Where are you now?
On any one of the, I know the town attorney is looking at me going, wow, just how remarkably anal are you? But what I'm trying to point out here is that for the purposes of having a record and showing the world that we actually know what we're doing, let's have our citations be exactly in the form that attorneys write them. So you'll see in the third whereas and other places throughout here, wherever we have a section thing, we always seem to say the number of the code, comma, et cetera. There's no comma there. It's just the number et cetera.
So noted, we'll make those changes.
Well, I think our work here is done for the evening. Thank you all.
I'm sorry.
Nothing, go on.
Okay. Shall we move on? All right, in the addendum that I believe is attached to the ordinance, to the mitigated NAGDEC, at least it is for me, excuse me, so let's go to the resolution adopting an addendum to the previously adopted mitigated NAGDEC. First page of Resolution 14-11, third from the bottom whereas, same addition after 2626 and 2600 Sir Francis Drake. Okay, next, moving on after that, you'll find the addendum to the mitigated NAGDEC. Attachment one. You with me? Okay, the list at the bottom, proposed project, after the number one, we should insert a number two and renumber the following ones, and that insertion should say rezone 2600 and 2626 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard from UR 7 to PDD, semicolon, and Tennelema and School Street Plaza from Light Commercial to PDD, or CL to PDD, and renumber the following. We're just going to insert a new number two, renumber the following, and reference the rezoning of the four parcels from what they previously were to PDD. Okay? That's it. So going back, we did have a comment or two at the planning commission with some, from some property owners, business owners at the strip center, or I got a call and one person came to the meeting, I believe, the strip center just west of Fairfax Market and the little strip mall there, specifically the women's gym and the veterinarian business. And they were concerned because they're listed as allowed juices currently under highway commercial, but in fact, they will not be listed as allowed juices once the zoning change should take place. That's true. Again, when we revisit the language in the CC, we will be first recommending changes to listing specific types of businesses, and we'll be going to a more generic classification of types of uses. And at that time, we'll want to for sure include language so that friendly businesses that complement our downtown, that, you know, may have been allowed in the CH but still should be allowed under your determination to be in the CC, will add that language. So there will be a period of time before we amend that language. And in fact, the planning commission in its wisdom added a line to their resolution saying, "The town looks forward to amending the language in the CC as soon as possible." To at least give some comfort that it's on our radar. We know that those allowed juices in the CC are going to be in a little bit of limbo time while we amend the language in the CC section. And furthermore, if those uses want to come in during that period of time and expand their business as a legal non-conforming business, they can do so. They can ask the planning commission for discretionary approval and/or any variances that might be needed for parking or whatever to consider approval of expanding of those legal non-conforming businesses. Okay?
So do you know how many businesses would be affected by this?
I don't.
And is there a way we can do some kind of outreach to those businesses, because we don't have people panicking?
Well, again, when we amend the language in the CC, and we noticed it, I noticed, we noticed 1,889 property owners and tenants within any 300 feet of any of these zone changes tonight. And when we revisit the language in the CC, the same thing will happen. So it...
If, Jim, if... We didn't amend the language, just hypothetically, wouldn't they be legal non-conforming uses?
Yes.
So it's not as though rezoning would undo their...
No, no.
Their use permit or anything like that.
No, they have every right to be there.
Yeah, so...
And again, just so you know, from staff's position, you know, we're, this is more about the forum of the town and eliminating chain retail and auto-centric planning. But hopefully, when we do revisit the language, we'll want to be all-encompassing to any type of operation that doesn't impact us negatively transportation-wise, drive-through windows, for example, or something, after the zoning takes place. We want to be inclusive. I mean, these are wonderful businesses. So that'll be, with your approval, that'll be our staff recommendation coming forward.
Right, right, thanks.
So, again, I know the public often doesn't have the time to follow all the nuances of what we do here. The general plan went through a 12-year rigorous process. Each element was brought up to you individually, then we did the super committee. We've had numerous discussions about the next steps, and here we are. Again, the policy decision in my mind was, in essence, made when you adopted the general plan, and this is a procedural step to codify those policy decisions that were made. It's actually, it's, it is, may I add that the four parcels going to PDD, well, the church site came to us as a prospective site for housing, that's why we made the change. Tennelema, the same thing. School Street Plaza, the same thing. I've spoken with all three of those property owners, they're very comfortable with this. And I might add also that, you know, the general plan is a living document. After you, if you take this action tonight to codify the policy decision that was made in 2012, a general plan is a living document that can be amended four times in a year, correct me if I'm wrong, Janet. So it's a living document that will go through amendments. Even the public can apply for a general plan change. So it's a living document, it's malleable, it should grow and change with the town.
Okay, any further questions of the planning director? Well, if not, I think it would be appropriate now to invite the public up to discuss the matter with us. Michael?
Michael McIntosh, how many acres are going to be available in the PDD, if I may ask?
I can't tell you off the top of my head. If you asked me before, I could have gotten to that information. If you'd like to know it after tonight, I'll be glad to get you that information.
Okay, but in excess of...
Actually, I believe if you go to the town's housing element, which is online right now, if you go to the town's website, and you go to the housing element section, even the existing housing element that's since been amended, you will see each of the PDD zones, well, actually, I probably can pull it up for you if you want me to take the time right now. Yeah, they're listed in the housing element.
Well, my question is, because looking at like State Assembly Bill Number One that's coming down the pike, and looking at our current planned Bay Area zoning requirements, there will be a minimum requirement of density use for these PDDs, our PDAs, and all housing that may be developed along these lines, a minimum of 20 units per acre. So if we have a substantial amount of land that's being offered, and should any of this be developed within these realms, we're looking at a lot of density that may or may not be good for our town in certain places. And I really would like to have a greater public input so we could better guide this in place. Like for myself, I understand that I don't want to see 100 houses covering my land. And because of that, I would accept a high rise, because I think it's better than losing all our land. But I'm also hoping that those things can really be pushed into our central corridors so our density is really that walking community. And as you have been championing your cohousing, this area on the parking lot for the gas station would be a wonderful place for cohousing of very, very small units. And so I would really like to see the public have a greater awareness of how many units we're really talking about bringing into our community, because I do think there's some constraints. But I think with the public input, we might have a more welcome audience when we see some of the numbers that I believe are before us.
Jim, do you have a more up-to-date answer, or would you like to go offline with Mr. McIntosh at a later time and sort of fill in the blanks here?
Well, I'd like to go offline with more thorough response, but we've fully vetted through the Affordable Housing Committee and through joint meetings between the Affordable Housing Committee, the General Plan Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and the town council, the original housing element and the amended housing element. And each of those instances, which were publicly noticed meetings, and I'd be surprised if you weren't at them, actually, we articulated the site capacity studies that were sponsored by the town for the church site and for Tennelema. And yes, we were able to meet the town, the state's requirement for extremely low income by agreeing that at the church site and Tennelema, we would zone, we would revise the planned district development language to specify a minimum of 20 units to the acre. We're required to rezone these sites as such, and they will each have to go through a review process for proposed projects if and when they come forward. We're required to rezone. So we were actually given carte blanche on our extremely low-income quota by taking that approach. In both of those instances, at our nickel, we brought up a very learned architect, and we held site capacity studies on both sites. And both sites were two floors, and small cottages for workforce housing at Tennelema, and 40 units of senior housing on the already disrupted area of the Lutheran Church site. They're wonderful approaches. In fact, I would argue one of the few times that you should aggregate special types of low-income folks or more affordable housing in one location. And then finally, with regards to the downtown, we got around the state hammering your town for years over wanting to push us to three floors. We got totally around that by referencing the historic scale of the downtown as two floors within the 28 and a half feet allowed. And the CC zone, in my opinion, will prevail at a maximum height of 28 and a half feet or two floors, which frustrates a lot of architects around here, because they can do three floors in 28 and a half feet, but they've been shot down almost every time they've tried. So if you want to get into further detail beyond those responses, I'd be glad to talk with you.
I think you're doing a good job. I'm just trying to look at a larger number, so as opposed to fragmenting out, as you cited, to specific projects.
And Michael, you're going to have to get into that a little offline. We have to move on with the rest of the meeting, and your three minutes have been expended.
Okay, but if we could look at getting gross numbers...
Again, talk, talk to Jim, he is the guardian of all of this information.
Thank you.
Okay. Other folks want to comment on this?
Hello, my name's Erin Wentzall from 2084 Sir Francis Drake. I'm the veterinarian there at the veterinary clinic. One of the businesses that's, you know, affected by this change from CH to CC. And as he explained, you know, that would make us a legal non-conforming business, you know, but would limit our rights in the future. And I think you asked a very good question, you know, how many businesses does that affect? And it seems premature to make this change if we don't know the answer to that question. You know, we're doing this because of the general plan, but that specifically spells out that we want to preserve the historical fabric of the town. I mean, the veterinary clinic's been there for over 50 years. So I'm not necessarily in favor of or against the change, but I just think it's premature to do it before we make these language changes. And, you know, I would encourage you to table the proposition until those language changes are spelled out, so there's clarity for the many businesses that are affected.
Jim, please.
As you know, we actually thought we were able to, we had incomplete and inaccurate information at the time of the adoption of general plan. We actually thought that since the zoning map was included in the general plan, we were free to start processing applications. And in fact, there were two other applications that we're returning the application fee for, for the retail, formula retail hoop that they had to jump through. So we were in a catch-22 where we're, this action tonight is catching us back up to where we actually thought we were. And we would encourage you, while what you're saying makes a certain element of sense, there's also the other side, the other issue of moving forward as fast as possible and adopting the zoning map so that we move away from the auto-centric highway commercial and not allow any applications to come in during this lag time that we didn't know we... we would be incurring, if that makes sense.
Let me see if I can answer your question a different way without making our town attorney's head explode. It's along the lines of the law zoning, all of this stuff. It's a bit like the sausage-making, the old story. But we can, I think, go out on a really short limb here and say that we recognize the need of ensuring and giving comfort to our businesses, even those that might become legal nonconforming, and that we will do everything and jump through every hoop to make sure that your business and all the other ones are not negatively prejudiced in any way or impacted inappropriately as we make the sausage and work through our general plan obligations.
Can I just, I'm sorry?
Well, I can appreciate that, but, you know, at the same time, I recognize that the general plan took 12 years to form, and I'm not sure who's going to be on the various councils at that time. So, again, I'm not sure that it wouldn't be prudent to put these things together. You know, we don't know how long that's going to take, or who's going to be making those decisions.
Let's see if we can find that out. When, how long will this take, Jim?
We were hoping, you're about to discuss the work program for the Town Center Plan. The first workshop in May, we actually were hoping to sort of revisit this issue with the public at that meeting, to sort of say where we're headed with this and gain the public's comments also, not unlike your comments. I have a list of duties that are mandatory by state regulations, and then we have some discretionary things, and I take my orders from this gentleman next to me. So I'll yield to the town manager on that.
Wow, that was a nice one. All right, Garrett, perhaps you can suggest and give comfort to the veterinarian?
Well, I would yield to the council, since I work for them. But actually, I guess, not being facetious, but seriously, what we can do is, if it's priority, which it is, off your latest retreat, one of your goals was to amend the CC code, we could actually do that as a separate process from the Town Center element in order to address those concerns sooner rather than later. But that will take time, because we do need to notice all the properties. You have so much of a limited staff, but we can accelerate that.
What the gentleman asked, the concern that he said was, yes, it did take 12 years, thanks for reminding us, and that councils come and councils go. However, nobody's going anywhere for at least another, a little less than two years. Clearly, we will have this done within two years, yes?
Oh, I would say by the end of the year.
Can I ask a question, though? I personally would like to know, and I imagine there are members of the public, especially businesses, that might be affected, by having the status of legal nonconforming, what are the implications going forward? I'd like to address what your specific concerns are, because if we're going to look at this, I personally don't know.
Well, again, this happens all the time, by the way, with towns rezoning properties. And you will be able to come forward with an application if you wanted to expand your business, which at that time, after this ordinance change would go into effect, to ask for an expansion of your business as a legal nonconforming business, okay? And the Planning Commission, in its discretionary powers, could, if they chose, and it's not a slam dunk, because you still have to, you know, advise your neighbors and let them come and argue whether they think you should be able to expand and all those things, there's parking requirements that are pretty onerous. But let's say you were able to convince the Planning Commission and make findings that you should be allowed to expand your business, then you would be expanding your business. Let's say it went south, and the Planning Commission heard from a lot of angry neighbors that you have, that they don't want you to expand, and here are dogs or whatever. And let's say they said no. You would have the right to appeal the Planning Commission decision, and you'd be right back in front of these folks.
Also mention, we have, on occasion, gone through the specified uses and amended them. I mean, we did it about three years ago, because there were some very anachronistic uses.
Ice houses.
Ice houses, tobacco stores, just really old-fashioned stuff that we dealt with in a pretty summary way. So, I mean, we're not looking to recast, you know, the zone that you're in, you know, and the uses. And I'm, I mean, I cannot make a promise, you know, going forward, but really, what we're trying to do is protect, meet our requirements under the state requirements for housing. The rezone is actually going to provide further entitlements to that zone so that housing on the second story will be as a matter of right. So there's really some very valuable entitlements that are going to be coming out of this for property owners and tenants. So I understand your concern that it's a little bit, you know, undecided at this point, but, I mean, I really would like to give you as much assurance as I can that it will be handled, it's going to be all right for you.
Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you.
Garrett, do you have a comment?
Well, I think what I was going to say is, if the council would like, we can bring this item to the Planning Commission probably within 90 days, start the process.
Terrific, thank you. Sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just have a few questions. I think I probably directed at staff.
But before you do so, it's nice to see our supervisor and former mayor back in the room.
Thank you, Mayor. You have five or six parcels, is that correct, with respect to the current issue before you, rezoning from?
No, actually, there's many more parcels that are getting rezoned. Yes.
Okay, because I'm looking at this map, and I only see a few. I know there's some URs, but there are more.
We provided you with a current zoning map and the new zoning map, and if you look at the difference in the CH to CC zone, you'll find that there's a large number of parcels that are going from CH to CC.
Okay. My questions are, when you adopt, assuming you adopt the ordinance, on the PDD zones, are there height limits established that are uniform within the PDD zone?
The PDD zone...
And also the density limits, or are there different scales of height and density with regards to the parcels?
The current language in the PDD zone doesn't address that at all.
It does not.
It's a very old approach to managing sort of large condo projects, which I believe is how it came into existence here. We've agreed with the state to, we've agreed, we've told the state, and our certification is based on us revising the language on certain parameters, and that would be, one would be the minimum density of 20 units to the acre, which we've tested through the site capacity studies. The language in there is very archaic, it's very arduous, it's got a three-step process. We've already begun to amend with our prime planning consultant. The language, to streamline that language, it's up to us and this body what that language, just like rewriting the CC zone, will say. I can guarantee you, from my five years in this town, and the reason we did those site capacity studies, it ain't going to be over 28 and 1/2 feet or two floors.
Well, Jim, let me ask you, the new zoning that's proposed, does it deal with density limits, heights?
Well, what we did, and the overall approach...
Well, that take place in the submission process of a project?
I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Well, if you do the rezonings, and I didn't read the ordinance, okay, that's proposed before the council, when do you establish the height limits and the density on each of the PDD parcels?
The language in the PDD zone will have to go through review at the Planning Commission and the Town Council. We will be making recommendations, staff will be making recommendations on those language changes. We'll go through a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and then two readings at the Town Council. And we will be making that language as appropriate as possible for the site capacity studies that we did on those two sites, and also for what we envision as a possibility on the School Street Plaza site.
So I presume, and I don't want to presume this, but this would take place before there was any submission of an application for development?
We'll probably, we hope to get that language revised prior to any submissions. It's a long road to hoe, to get those projects ready for hearings.
I understand that. Can you give me an estimate of time, Jim?
Well, the church has...
I'm talking about the Planning Commission process and then having to go to the Town Council.
To amend the PDD. We also hope to do that before the end of the year.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you.
You'll come visit us again?
I'll be back.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment? Seeing no more public comment, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to council. Any thoughts, comments, or motions?
I'd like to make one general comment for the, you know, I don't know how many people are watching this at home, but just in layperson's terms, I mean, I think what, generally, what we're looking at here is what the downtown of Fairfax looks like, which is a central commercial, which has, you know, two floors in places, but the right of having apartment or sometimes offices, right, on the second floor?
Housing on the second floor by right.
Okay.
And you need, I believe, currently, I think you need a variance to have an office on the second floor, and they're not allowed on the first floor.
Okay. And it basically expands that out, it's more pedestrian-oriented, and it expands that out past the core of the downtown, you know, the Bellinas Broadway corner, expanded out a couple of blocks in a couple of directions, to where currently, there's a highway commercial zone, which you tend to get a big box with a parking lot around it. And it's not particularly pedestrian-oriented, and it's auto-centric. And in the interest of making Fairfax more people-friendly, this is what this is aiming at, right, just to put it in simple terms.
Okay, then.
Could I mention one other thing, too? Is just historically, the conversion from CH to CC was actually our response to the state trying to really impose much higher density, much higher height limits, I think it was a 35-foot height limit, three stories. It really would have changed the character of the town, especially when you come in center, you would have had these two tall box-like structures with condos and/or apartments going up three stories, stories, rather. So we were comfortable in doing this, because this is the traditional historic zoning that characterizes the downtown, the most iconic features of Fairfax. So we were comfortable in expanding that, because I think everybody feels some sort of attachment and identification with that downtown core area. So that's what we're hoping to do, and it really will provide some benefit by giving incentives for people to build second-story housing, live workspaces, that type of thing, good scale, you know. So hopefully, it's a good step for us.
Can I ask a question, based on the council's regulations? Based on your comment, I know most of the communities are between a rock and a hard place, but you're saying that you're not going to consider going three stories, is that what I'm hearing you're saying? Because that would really change the character of this town dramatically, and...
No, the idea is 28 and 1/2 feet, the traditional height limit, two stories. And it took a lot of back and forth with the state and going through a very complex set of negotiations. And, I mean, I really thought it was a coup for us to come out of this where we are.
That's good news, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I ask a motion, and not to in any way embarrass the former mayor and supervisor, but for those of you sitting here and watching, if you're traveling on Sir Francis Drake and you say to yourself, "Well, it might not be the prettiest road in the world, but it certainly would be much more onerous if it was a couple of lanes in each direction carving a scar right through our town," is because of Pete Aragoni's work when he was the supervisor and mayor of this town. And if you are so inclined, you might pick up a copy of Marty Griffin's book, Saving the Marin Sonoma Coast, which goes into great and eloquent detail on the work that you did and on behalf of a grateful community at a time when environmental protection was just at the dawning. Thank you. Okay. And with that, I will accept a motion.
I would move to adopt a resolution, adopting an addendum?
Give us a little direction here, Garrett, Jim, council?
Yeah, if you look at the first page, the recommendation, adopt a resolution, which is adopting an addendum to a previously adopted mitigated negative declaration with respect to proposed ordinance 778. So that's the first action, the second one?
I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it. So I would move that we adopt a resolution, adopting the addendum to a previously adopted mitigated negative declaration with respect to proposed ordinance number 778.
Second.
Bragman, Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Second.
And secondly, I would move to introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 778, amending certain sections of the town code and zoning ordinance to eliminate the highway commercial zone district, and amend the other affected sections of business, taxes, license, and regulations in zoning ordinance to bring the affected portions of the town code into conformance with the relevant portions of the 2010-2030 Fairfax general plan.
Second.
Second.
Bragman, Reed, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous again? Thank you all for coming on this issue. We now move on to our regular agenda, which is the approval of the work program to develop the very important Town Center Plan. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, do I need to get over here, Mr. Mayor? Should I get Councilmember Kohler back?
Okay, let's go off the record, we'll take a break here. Okay, let's go back on, back on the record. We're now moving on to number two, approval of the work program to develop Town Center Plan. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this is a really exciting next step in implementing the 2010-2030 general plan for the town. As you may recall, the Town Center element that was adopted as part of the seven required element, actually, it was the one optional element, the eighth element, optional element in the general plan, adopted in April 2012. And in it, which is online on the town's website, it calls for the creation of a Town Center Plan. So what you have before you tonight is a proposal to conduct a series of thoroughly public participatory workshops in the effort to develop that Town Center Plan. It is, we are proposing basically three successive workshops, one in the spring, one in the summer, one in the fall, and we'd like you to look at those dates in your staff report and make sure that they don't conflict with any of you. Basically, in this sort of approach to creating a plan, there are five sort of generic steps. There's facts, there's identification of problems, there's coming up with ideas, generating ideas and solutions, there's picking preferred alternatives of those solutions, and then there's acceptance. So attached to your council report, and in the public packet in the back of the room and on the town's website, where this is listed in tonight's agenda attachment, you have a five-step process that I just outlined for you to accomplish creating a draft Town Center Plan and delivering it to you by the end of the year. And again, the first step is for staff to compile a workbook of all relevant background documents. This would include relevant elements within the general plan, circulation, it may include sections from, you know, the safety element, it might include safe elements regarding flood and fire. We would also revisit, this is in the, putting together this workbook, which is the primer for the workshops that would be coming. It would be put on the town's website, or a special website for this process going forward. And in addition to creating this workbook, this primer on all relevant policies, bike and ped, circulation element, excuse me, the bike and ped master plan, we, as staff, would also, and our prime consultant, do an urban design analysis, which is sort of modeled on a very famous approach that San Francisco pioneered, of a series of data boards that result in a summary, a preliminary summary or interpretation of problems and opportunities. So those would be the two background pieces that we would take to the first workshop. And we're proposing that workshop on Saturday, May 3rd, I hope that works for you all, and it would be in this room from 9:00 to 1:00. And we would roll out at that workshop, we would review the workbook, we would review the urban design analysis and the summary interpretation of problems and opportunities, and then we would ask those gathered in this room, and we hope... and then we would ask those gathered in this room, and we hope this room is packed, in fact, I hope the room is so full, we're going to have to go up to the parcade, I'm sorry, the pavilion, we would review those problems and opportunities, and the public would tell us whether we got some wrong, some right, or we missed some. So, that first workshop is a briefing, background documents, the relevant policies in place, the goals identified in the general plan, as well as our learned urban design analysis of what's on the ground and what are succinct problems and opportunities. And hopefully, coming out of that first workshop, we get a reality check from the public about our preliminary analysis of issues and opportunities, and they're fully briefed as well on all the background documents that some of you have been a part of crafting and/or adopting. The next workshop that we're proposing for August 2nd, and there is no good time in the summer, July can be just as onerous than finding a good Saturday, so forgive me, but at least it's at the beginning of August, it's the 2nd, and we're proposing that that one, where the rubber really meets the road, so to speak, or the rubber gets lifted from the road, if you will, that one, we're proposing from 9:00 to 3:00. And that's where the ideas get generated. That's where we'll do what's called breakout groups. We will actually, using the problems and opportunities list, we will make sure that we address all those items, problems and opportunities identified in the workshop one, during brainstorming sessions with breakout groups. And it's a little valuable, depending on how many people were there, but usually there are breakout tables with site plans and icons for types of things, and these groups sort of get tasked with looking at certain clusters of issues, if you will, and then come back to the main group and report. And each breakout group has a person that's leading the discussion, facilitating the discussion, very important person who you pick, and also a hand that's writing on a tablet, a visible tablet, the ideas to come out of those breakout sessions. Then you come back to the main group, you report, and then we do it again. And then we come back and report again. And then all that is documented on these sheets, and we then go away from the second workshop, the brainstorming workshop, and we start to discern what makes sense, what doesn't. We'll have David Perizzi sort of reality checking, you know, if someone comes up with a turning circle, let's say, or something, is there room? Is that going to really help traffic? Is that something, you know, palatable? Or other things, adding parking in places, maybe? Or how do we address no net loss of parking in the downtown, which is part of the general plan policy, while we're making some changes to roadways, perhaps? So, we'll test it with our learned ability. And then in workshop three, that's proposed for October 11th, the earlier weekend is a religious holiday, so we avoided that, we would actually come back, and in that workshop, we would, with the public present, pick, after we've sort of refined those brainstorming ideas out of the second workshop, then the public would be in the position to pick preferred alternatives. Now, and then lastly, we'd go away and we'd further articulate or further burrow in, from a technical standpoint, any issues, pros and cons with those preferred alternatives, and we'd package together in a draft Town Center Plan, and we'd deliver it to you in December. Now, this is, sometimes these events are done in a very compact period of time. The design world calls those charrettes, the doing it in a very fast time. This is an elongated process to be very thorough. We've also got about $10,000 left in the planning department's budget for the preliminary work going into the first workshop. And then our budget rolls over July 1st, and we will be coming back to you with the funds to do some of the hard knocking in, after the second workshop and the third workshop. So, it's spreading it out, which is a little more financially palatable, and of course, we have a work program in real life on other things that makes it, so we can't drop everything and just do this. But we still are targeting this process to get a draft plan to you by December of this year. I'm really excited about doing this. This is what I've done in my past in the consulting world, what I'm trained as an urban designer to do. I love it. I actually have been involved with some rather large charrettes, fast charrettes. I did one on 1/4 of the Washington, D.C. waterfront in 2000. They're a wonderful event, and we think, we are recommending to you that we publicly notice these meetings, and in fact, if we publicly notice it, you, the planning commission, the G-PIC, the General Plan Implementation Committee, and the Affordable Housing Committee could come, but we'd actually like to schedule it as a special meeting of all four bodies so you can be involved in the iterations, in the discussion, in the breakout groups, and get your fingerprints on the knife, so to speak, on what's being proposed. And we all come together as a town, I live here four nights a week, so I can say that. And again, one of the most beautiful things about a process like this is when you all come together, it's not about showing up in the 11th hour and saying, "No." It's about getting us all in the room and finding out how we can all agree on some yes. And the beauty of the process is you learn things you didn't know you didn't know. You know the old saying that unfortunately Rumsfeld stole? There's three kinds of knowledge. There's what you know, what you don't know, and what you don't know you don't know. And that's the magic in these public events. So, again, this is a thoroughly Fairfaxian public participatory process, which I love. I should have my head examined. I love it so much. But anyway, I'm, as you can tell, really excited about doing this, and so be it.
Thank you for that eloquent introduction to this very exciting process.
Thank you.
Let's, questions of Jim as we go forward? Well, John?
Sure. I've been involved with a lot of this process, the general plan, for a number, over a decade now, I guess. And I, we've been through public information gathering on this and what people like and don't like about downtown, problems they see, and things like that. I would, the general plan committee before I was on it did a bunch of outreach at a Fairfax Festival, and then we also did a similar thing to what you're talking about here, I think about, what was it, 2005, 2006? I don't know. It was...
Before I...
It was before you arrived. In this room, a similar sort of way, and some really interesting things developed out of the process, I thought it was excellent. I just want to make sure that historical input is there in the...
Oh, yeah.
In the information that you put out to begin with.
You're talking about the public workshops during the development of the Town Center element? Yes.
Yes.
In fact, I would like you to give that briefing on the first workshop.
Happy to. So, you know, that should be there for people to look at and think about, I mean, they've had a number of years to think about it. One of the reasons why we're going through this process now is that it was about when we were considering passing this general plan, it had been four or five years or something when we first started talking about it, that that input, those community workshops happened, and enough time had gone by so that we thought, "Well, it's appropriate to get even more input from the town." You know, some people were thinking, "Well, wait a minute, I wasn't, you know, I didn't make it there that time, and I'm interested." And it's really important to get it right and have the community agree on, everybody says they love Fairfax, including myself, and we don't want to mess it up, you know? So, that's important to do. I also think it would be important to, you know, some people are not going to be able to make the August 2nd workshop, for instance. I think it's important to get additional methods of input, whether that's receiving comments, written comments, or emails, or something like that, just so that if, you know, somebody wants to get something on the record, they can. Obviously, there's a lot of give and take when you're talking about something with a lot of facets that are interrelated. So, somebody can't just come in and say, "Well, I think it's all crazy, you guys are nuts." And that's the comment, and that should hold sway. They may well think we're all nuts, but nonetheless, ideas can come up in that form, and they can be out there, you know, we should publish, you know, you have a board with those comments on it on the side of the August 2nd thing, and we can hit the salient points and present them to the group, you know? Just because I think it's important to have a thorough public process and thorough input there. I also like the idea that you didn't put forth in your comments here, but also that was in the staff report of having check-in sessions where our council meetings are broadcast, for instance, and, you know, hopefully, this, you know, we could make this thing broadcast. It might be difficult because it's a different forum to set up cameras and stuff like that, but we could have reports on all of these at our regular council meetings, and that would be yet another avenue for this information to get out to the public so they could really know what's going on and get input.
Forgot to mention that. That's exactly right. We would be also coming back in your normal town council meetings and giving you a review of what we all accomplished or not, and so it's another way to check in with the public when they're used to regularly listening to you all. Okay. Barbara, please.
Yes, well, two things. One, I want to say thank you for everybody's hard work on this, and I agree with John as far as getting more input. And one suggestion, this is not my comment, but it's one suggestion, is to consider, Garrett was able to set up a separate website for the bridge work, that might be the way to go here, too, so people will have one place to go for what's latest, greatest. And so, thank you for all your hard work and John's and everyone's hard work on this. One thing that I would like to see kind of spelled out that I think is important to consider in every one of the workshops is, I know it's discussed a little bit in the staff report, ingress and egress out of this town from areas like the Cascades, you know, during any kind of flood event, fire, you know, we are going to have one of these, or an earthquake, or all. And I think it's really going to be critical, safety and ingress and egress when what we decide to do. For example, if we decide to shut off certain streets, we will be routing people through Dominga and areas like that. So, I really do think ingress and egress out of the town, safety during natural disasters will be critical. I'd like to see if some of the fire guys would at least weigh in on that. But also, ingress and egress out of town during peak periods is getting more and more difficult. So, I'd like to see, maybe I know where you have an other in the first task, I'd like to have that there because I think that's going to be really important for whatever we do, is making sure that it will work and the town will continue to flow as well as it does. But thank you for your hard work.
Larry?
Are we going to be notifying folks within 500 feet of the downtown?
We could.
Think it'd be a good idea?
I think we can. I think what we've done in the past, maybe for the bridges, is we use the volunteer email list and as much newspaper and other email list to get the word out, but we can do noticing. It will be a lot of notices, similar to what we did for this last item, the rezone. We'll probably end up sending out 1,500, 2,000 notices.
Okay. Apropos of that, I recall, because it was so last minute, I was stunned to see that so much quality time by our planning director, our clerk, and others, we've got to get a couple of slaves, like Drake students, in here to, you know, to do that kind of work. I know that they get community service credit and things like that. We've got to dragoon them because we can't be paying our high-priced staff to do...
In half of your report, we had a major breakthrough. We found out that Avatar can triple-fold the flyers.
And we'll pay for it.
We pay for it.
Right. All right.
I think it might be worth doing some formal noticing because I know as far as the traffic impact, it's a big concern, and it's sort of been a motif that's been going through our meetings, you know, for the last two years, ever since the Town Center Plan was sort of published, so...
Hey, and let me just say, since we're on air right now, we have some members of the public that hung in there, which is great, you know, there will be a couple controversial items that we're going to be discussing that I've mentioned here during our regular meetings, and one of which is the disposition of Bellinas between Elsie and Broadway. Part of what came out of that workshop you're referencing, that I hope you'll brief us on at the first workshop, was the idea of pedestrianizing that section. It's very controversial, it will be discussed, so will managed parking. These things are called out in the general plan to explore. So, we will be exploring managed parking. You know, that can come in all shapes and forms. It can be employee parking programs, it can be...
Jim?
So, those are two controversial items. I'm just piquing your interest, so you'll come.
I'm looking forward to the 90 emails I'm going to get by 3 o'clock tomorrow. Renee?
Well, I actually wasn't done, you know, and I just think we should also be contacting the various user groups, stakeholders, whatever you want to call them, like the Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, identifiable groups that we know are going to be interested in this. So, I just, I just don't, like you said, I don't want it to be a last-minute process where people come at the last minute and say, "No," you know, we want people, we want it to be a collaborative event. So, everything we could do to make it so would be appreciated.
Renee?
So, yeah, I had, what was the year when this came back as a charrette? When this was in its first charrette? Whatever it was, it was 10-ish years ago, and I was here.
I think, yeah, it was less than 10, but not much less than 10, maybe it was...
I guess what, this will lead into a question in wondering, what happens from, you know, at the end of this, this really exciting process, which I am very much looking forward to? Does it go to G-PIC? What's the process? Because what I was thinking about is that 10 years ago, I was here, and it all looked very exciting, and I'm wondering, what's the process from there to implementing some of the pieces that we determine and that you come back to us with a draft for?
Well, as it shows you in the last section, when we, step five, we'd come back presumably with a couple of things, including an implementation strategy. After you bless this document, it's the done deal. Then we get on with finding ways to fund the improvements and find staff time to implement those improvements. It doesn't go back, it doesn't go around. This is it. This is the real shebang, and...
I think the first part is the, we have a grant already to do some pedestrian bicycle improvements around the parcade.
That's just sort of parallel to this process, and we will be bringing that up at the first workshop because while there's a list of improvements that we got the grant for, we have to actually create working drawings to build the improvements, and those, that's where the fine tuning comes in, you know, exactly where that ramp should go, exactly, you know, the side box priority. Yeah, let's not get too much into the weeds. Let's bring the public into this. Comments, public comment on this? My call.
Listening to Barbara's comment about the egress in the future, and I've cited a few times, if you look at our town and the elevation of our town, especially if we have a flood or if we have a fire, so we're going to have restriction of traffic through the town, people in a cascade and coming down the mountain are going to be blocked or precluded from going through a high-dense area like our town. If the town of Fairfax could see it in their wisdom to bring a bridge across into Pastory, and I own both sides of it, we could actually allow that traffic to circumvent the downtown to stay on a 500-foot floodplain.
I get it, but you're getting into the actual meat of the conversation that will be happening.
But since it's an avoided subject, I'm just bringing up a subject matter so it can be included in dialogues.
And you, no doubt, will be here to present it in the charrette process.
I try hard, but many meetings I do have family, too. So, just in case, thank you.
Anybody else wish to come up and speak?
Lou, before you speak?
Lou Vakaro, 21 Olima.
I want to express the council's deep and heartfelt thoughts and sympathies.
Thank you very much. We've been going through a lot lately, and I came down tonight to speak about Ten Olima. I know Mr. Woods put a lot of this and thought into this, but I've went up and down the neighborhood, and all, every person on Manor Road, on Olima Road is against this proposal of PDD, every one of them. And they were here at the planning commission meeting, and they will come again if required. But they're against this PDD zoning because I lived across the street from Robinis when it was a restaurant. I was so glad when they got out of there because in the middle of the night, all the cars are pulling out of there, half the people were drunk, and their lights flashed into our house, so it was so great to have them get out of there. And to think that maybe we might rezone that to possibly 30 units could go in there, I'm definitely against it. All the neighbors up and down the street on Olima are all against it, and I just want to let that be part of the record for your consideration. Thanks a lot. to let that be part of the record for your consideration. Thanks a lot.
Other public comment, please. Yes?
Peggy Lego Marcino, I live at Seven Bridge Court. I have grave concerns about closing down Bolinas. And I realize there will be an opportunity to talk about this at these work groups. But I live, my vehicle access to my house is off of Dominga. Dominga already bears the brunt of commuter traffic in the morning and the evening because people don't want to take the time to go down Bolinas, so they come down our street. They drive too fast. That turn onto Napa is dangerous. People are trying to back out of driveways. Kids are on bicycles. I really have grave concerns about closing down that part of Bolinas. People are not going to go further through town to take some roundabout way to get up to the Cascades.
Without, without getting too far ahead of the whole process, I think I'm on firm ground saying, so much study would have to go into this. And beyond that, so much re-engineering would have to go into the Elsie situation because of the fire trucks and engines having to deal with that. The, the bar is so high on this that while I'm in no position to say or to see the future, I have to tell you, there are a lot of things, a lot of dominoes that would have to fall before that one fell.
Well, I would love it if that were true. But it still is a distinct possibility if Bolinas is closed down. So, because we are the next parallel street over. And we already can't park on the street when the Fairfax Festival and the parade happens. We are blocked off for Halloween, for some unknown reason, every year. I can't get home from work. So I just don't want to see us become the 19th Avenue of San Francisco. That's what I'm worried about. The town just encroaches upon us. Bicycle traffic, I mean, you name it. We've just, we get it in spades. And I think we need to make that a little more, that, that, the burden of increased traffic needs to be borne by other neighborhoods.
Might I just, just add that this process is going to give the, you know, ample time and it is the opportunity to bring all of these concerns. And I'm sure you will find like-minded people and then you'll probably be challenged by others. But that's the, that's the beauty of the process which is coming up. So please make sure to attend.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and also I think the intention is to make things better. I mean, you know, nobody wants to make it work for only one user group or only, you know, and making, one of the ideas that came out of that charrette eight years ago, or whenever it was, was making it a pedestrian-only thing. And that's been focused on by a few people in the community as like, oh, that's the only thing that's going to happen. But I think that what, if you look at the plan, what it recommends is doing something so that Bolinas is not your only option getting through, you know, and improving the Elsie Bank route, for instance, so that there's other options. And so that sometimes, for instance, we had a street festival on Bolinas last August, have a couple of them. And it's an event that happens for an afternoon. And it's, it's a good event. And we, you know, had the police monitor very carefully the first time around and on Dominga as well as on Elsie and to see how it moved. And it seemed to move pretty favorably. I mean, it wasn't-
I, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying, there already is another option for traffic on Bolinas, and it's Dominga.
I hear.
And there's probably some ways that we can-
I just don't want it to get worse than it already is.
Wait, wait, wait. I know we don't want to get into the weeds, as we say, but I think it's, it's an important issue because it's a main one that comes up. And I think that there's also some actions we can take to make sure the traffic doesn't end up on Dominga. You know, that's part of this ongoing process. And I'm looking forward to seeing how it all plays out through the year or two.
Okay, but let's hold it for a couple of months. This better be serious.
It is serious. I wasn't going to say anything and I just kind of, I've got a solution that'll take care of all of it. I really think we should just consider banning cars in the town of Fairfax, because that's where we're all going anyway. And maybe while we're at it, rip up most of the arable land that's underneath pavement and asphalt. And start growing things that in the water go into the soil and the water table. And I am serious about that.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for further discussion and a motion. No further conversation, and certainly we've conversed on this a lot.
I will move.
Excellent. What would you move?
I would move to approve the work program to develop a town center plan.
I'll second it. With the proviso that there is some formal noticing that goes along with it, so.
And, and modes of input?
Okay.
And can I ask, I'm sorry, the tenet, you, you wrote it as the tentative dates are. Does that mean it's up for negotiation?
We'd like to move back on the date, yeah.
Okay. Oh, right now?
Well, you don't need it right now, but it'd be good in a timely fashion.
I just want to make sure that that wasn't then stamped and sealed.
It's a tentative date.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And it's unanimous, it was Goddard Bragman.
Correct.
Moving on to number three on the, on the regular agenda, discuss and consider the requirement for stores and other places to charge a mandatory fee for paper bags provided at checkout. Garrett?
Shares background, as you may recall, that in 2008, the voters approved an ordinance reducing use of plastic bags in town. The ordinance does require businesses to provide recycled paper bags or reusable bags. But the ordinance does not require a mandatory chore, charge for such bags. So in addition to Fairfax, right now, the county, Marin and Mill Valley have ordinances and they do have a mandatory charge for paper bags. The other cities and towns in the county are also considering adopting an ordinance. And so Councilmember Goddard suggested that perhaps the council might want to take a look at, should we implement a mandatory charge so there's consistency between the different towns and municipalities in the county when it comes to charging for a reusable paper bag. But that being said, there are some things, if the council chooses to go down this path, that as staff, we would need a little direction just to address the different issues before we would come back to you with an actual ordinance requiring such a charge.
Let's have at it. John?
I mean, my understanding of this charge for paper bags is kind of a defense measure to keep plastic bag manufacturers from suing municipalities that pass plastic bag ordinances. But our ordinance is passed by a citizens initiative. So, so we are, just to be clear, I think that we're safe from that, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no. You're correct that the claim by the plastic bag manufacturers initially was that a ban on plastic increased the use of paper. And so in order to address that, I guess you could say, there was a charge placed on paper in a number of plastic bag ban ordinances that were enacted. Very common to see that done, and I think that is one of the reasons. But I think there are also other reasons, and perhaps Councilmember Goddard is going to speak to those, to further reduce the use of paper. Has nothing to do with litigation, has nothing to do with plastic at all. It's just to encourage a reduction in the use of paper bags and increased use in reusable bags.
Yeah, which is an admirable objective, I think.
Other councilmembers? Larry?
What about the whole fee and tax implications of it?
So this is not a fee. We're proposing, I mean, if you, if you wanted to talk about this, certainly, this is not something, the way I understand, we would structure it, it would not be a fee. It would not be something the town would collect. It would be a charge required to be placed on paper bags. But it would not be something that the town collected. So it's not a fee in the traditional sense of the word.
It's a fee in the non-traditional sense of the word.
It's a charge, actually.
It's a charge. It's actually a floor, a floor, a price floor, if you will.
Right, right.
Yeah, and Janet, actually, the way they're talking about it, and I did a lot of, were you finished?
No.
No, go ahead.
No, I mean, I, you know, I just, I think it is a, a fee in a certain costume or in disguise. But, I mean, I'm willing to go-
Well, you know, there is a case-
Explore it further.
Yeah, there's a case out of LA where a court said it's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Oh, well, then, we've got something.
Yeah.
It's not a fee.
Plus, because the money's going to the store that's providing the bag for free otherwise?
Yeah. I mean, the way it's, the way it's worked in all of the places, and I, I did some research on all of the bans that exist now. And all of the plastic bag bans are accompanied by a fee on paper. So they're calling it a fee on paper, it's not a tax. So, right, it doesn't go to the jurisdiction. And yet, the retailers, as far as I can tell, are the ones who retain the fee.
Correct. I mean, it's, it's a dual use of the word fee. It's probably an incorrect use of the word fee. It's a charge. Let's call it a charge, so that we get away from fees, which the town sets and collects, and then does whatever with them. And fees are in your, set by you in your master fee schedule. But this is a charge, a price floor, if you will, that, that you have to charge at least five cents, 10 cents, whatever it is, for a paper bag to further decrease or encourage a decrease in the use of paper bags. So increase-
It's more like a bottle deposit, is what it seems like to me, like a concept.
Well, but you don't get it back.
Except you don't get the dime back if you bring back the paper bag.
You know, there's a precedent now that places that are charging the fee, or the, sorry, people that are charging, there are many places where it's been worked into a kickback to nonprofits, that, that charge itself. The studies have shown in the places that have imposed a charge high enough that it drops the usage of those bags. Ireland imposed a charge actually on plastic when they first started talking about this. It was a 20-cent charge, and they decreased the use of plastic bags by 95% in a very short period of time because it didn't make sense to people to buy plastic bags and they could carry their own. So as this all came up, the idea became, and the slogans in the environmental movement were all about, this isn't about paper or plastic. So the stores used to say, would you like paper or plastic? And have you noticed, I haven't noticed people asking that anymore. They ask if you want a bag. If they have plastic, they tend to put it in the plastic. This is not in Fairfax. If not, you ask for paper and they will provide it sometimes. So this is an opportunity to get away from plastic or paper. So in some of the litigation that happened from the American Chemistry Council and the plastic bag industry, they were right in asking, you know, that, that an EIR takes place, an environmental impact report, because they were saying, you're just going to push all the burden onto paper, which is an energy-intensive and water-intensive process, be it that it is compostable in the end. But basically, by imposing a fee, sorry, by imposing a charge, you're disincentivizing people from taking something which is ultimately going to be waste. Whether you reuse it once, your paper bag becomes your garbage. We don't need them because we have a plethora of reusable options and they have become inexpensive. And I would question, I would actually wonder if anybody in this room didn't have a reusable bag somewhere on their person, or in their car, or in their home. So they're, they're plentiful. So.
That's the question, as a devil's advocate, if I may pose it. Very unscientific, but since you brought this forward, when I go to the market in Fairfax, the two that we have that I suppose are at the core of this conversation, I see most people, you know, bringing their own bags. So I'm wondering if we've succeeded. We've had the moral conversation, and I'm wondering, gosh, do we have to set this whole thing up because we-
Well, I would say that if we asked all of the grocers and Fairfax Lumber, which is the other one that uses the single-use, the handle brown bags, how many they use, they would tell you it's quite significant. And so-
Let me just ask you, I just want to go back and forth with you on-
I don't know the number.
On food stuff in the supermarkets, I, I think that there is a, people have gotten used to it. They know where they're going with this. I, it's, I don't think people who go to Fairfax Lumber also, you know, kind of think to themselves, oh, I should bring my bags as well. It's a different, it's a different cat. So, but let me ask you another question. We're not talking here about, it's just bags with handles. So can you talk about the full range of stores that might be opposing this?
Yeah, this is, this shouldn't be that difficult in Fairfax. The, the plastic bag ban was single-use carryout bags. So it meant the plastic bags that, like Safeway bags. Those are considered single-use. It applies also to our farmer's market because their bags that they call produce bags also have handles and they're plastic, and they are no longer using them. And we'll be checking, making sure that that's the case this year. So in this situation, it's, it is the Fairfax market, it is the good earth, and it is Fairfax Lumber that use those, those single-use. It does not apply to the Szechuan Chef or to the other takeout restaurants where they use paper bags now, but they are not single-use carryout bags.
Is it the handles that make it single-use?
The handles make it carryout.
Okay, so, well, I would just say, I support the idea of this because I think it does disincentivize people from forgetting to bring their reusable bags in, which I know I've been guilty of at times. So I think it, it gives you more of a reason to remember to bring those reusable bags in. And I know I've probably got 20 of them in my car, so.
Let's hear the public's thoughts on this.
Actually, David-
Yeah, more?
Yes, one other thing. And that is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure this is the, the exact appropriate moment, but what I'm going to recommend is that we impose a 25-cent charge. I did a lot of research. I looked around at what's been effective and what hasn't. In Marin County, we have high-end retail people, and I'm going countywide now. I'm not, I'm not picking on Fairfax businesses at all. The comment that I've received when I've done outreach is, for five or 10 cents, I'm not going to embarrass myself or my customers. I'm just going to eat the, eat it. And so what that does is it doesn't give the opportunity to educate on reduction of waste. They feel it's tacky. So I've had several of those conversations. Opposing a 25-cent fee pretty much guarantees that we're going to make a huge dent in the amount of paper bags that are coming. Well, they're recyclable material, but we are basically taking a lot of paper and putting it in our compost, hopefully. Generally, it's going to landfill.
So I would just say one thing. When I'm not shopping in Fairfax, I've shopped at Woodlands Market, which is very high-end, and people can clearly afford to spend 10 cents for a bag. They have no problem charging you for that 10-cent bag. And I feel that for Fairfax, we have a lot of working-class people. And I, I really do think that that's draconian at this time. I think we should monitor it, but I guess we should open it up to the public.
One more small piece is that Novato has just passed 10 cent and moving quickly to 25. San Rafael has just passed 10 cent.
Technically, I think we're all reusable bags. But just electrolytes and cells and stuff. Clarification, what becomes of the funds collected from the bags? Should those all go to the store, or what?
At this point, they go back to the store. It's not a tax.
The store collects it and they keep it.
I'm sorry. Yes, the money goes, they purchase the bags, they charge for the bags, they keep the money.
And do the stores have to say, we're going to charge you for a bag if we're going to give you one? Do people know they're getting charged for a bag?
Well, that's part of the point, is-
And what's to keep a store from getting bags that don't have handles on them to hand out?
I mean, I suppose there isn't anything, but I don't imagine they're very practical.
Grocery bags didn't used to have handles on them, and plenty of them still don't have handles on them. So you can still get bags without a handle on it from a store.
Rather than get in that level of detail, for staff, once we get direction from council, how you, what are your key points, then we could address those type of issues, just like which- like which stores, type of bag, those type of details.
You know, it all helps. There are lots of bags. I think if you go to the Good Earth and look at the stacks going out, you'll see that there are lots of bags going out from there, Fairfax Lumber and other places. It's habit. How do we change our habits and get people to carry their stuff? And it all adds up. And honestly, cars and stuff are doing us in a lot quicker, but we gotta do it all. And thank you. Um, I support a quarter.
Hello, Jennifer Hammond. Um, so I support the 25 cent charge. When I first heard the 25 cent number, I, I was, I was sort of, wow, that's high. But though, when you think about it, you know, all the energy, the water, the trees, the transportation that goes into bringing those bags to the consumer is kind of outrageous and is worth way more than 25 cents. Um, so I don't think it's too high, and, um, I, I think a lot of people still don't use reusable bags in Fairfax. I go to Fairfax Market, and I rarely see somebody with a reusable bag there. So, um, I definitely support the 25 cent.
So as long as I have you up here.
Yeah.
And again, and again, I, I'm not being facetious, Mayor Bloomberg, um, but where do we stop? Um, you know, Snickers bars will make you fat, the stuff in Coca-Cola will rot your teeth out. I could go on for an hour here. Um, there are lots of things that are environmentally and personally suspect. Um, how did we decide that we're making our stand right here?
I don't know. It's, it's, uh, yeah, you can't, you can't fight every battle, but this is one that is, you know, pretty easy to move forward with. And, um, you get a lot, a lot of bang for your buck. I mean, I think there's a lot of education that can go into this for the consumer. Um, and it's not hard. It's, you know, you bring a reusable bag. And I think a lot of people, you know, intend to, but they just haven't gotten in the habit of doing it. So something like this can kinda push them.
It's another way.
Yeah.
Plastic bags are a pariah on the planet. They have absolutely no use whatsoever, and they cause secondary disasters.
Yeah.
That we all know about.
Yeah.
Paper, you're right. I've toured a paper company. The amount of water that goes into it is astounding.
Yeah.
And for the most part, it ends up being newsprint someplace.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, um, about the nanny state approach to these things. Um, really is the impacts of this more important than obesity from, uh, things made with high fructose corn syrup? Uh, and we could just.
I don't know if you can really, it's kinda apples and oranges. I mean.
What's next?
Well, let's, let's do it all. Let's start here.
Okay, I don't wish to put you on the spot. It's just when I saw this, I, I imagine that we will get questions from the community.
Right.
And I suspect that will be the question for the community, among others.
Perhaps. Um, but again, it's 25 cents. I don't think it's too high of a charge for, I don't, it's something people will get used to pretty quickly, I think.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, with that little elitist answer, I'm much more with Barbara on that one.
Well, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I, I just wanna say that I, I actually think it's a little, um, overprotective and thinking, and maybe, if you don't mind, a little condescending about lower-income folks to think that they don't, can't have a $1 bag that they carry with them.
I just wanna interrupt and say, it wasn't, I'm talking about people not being able to afford 25 cents for a few bags should they forget. Um, it adds to the price of their groceries. I, in no way was intimating that when people, um, people in this town think about what they do, but if people forget, or they decide they need a brown paper bag, but they don't wanna spend 25 cents for it, it adds to the grocery bill. And I think we've got people that are hurting in town. That's what I was com-
Any other questions?
Usually, we don't grill the people who come up for public comment.
Thank you.
But thank you.
All right, thanks.
Who else would like to speak on this issue? Sir?
I just happen to agree with you, the mayor. I think it's one of those only-in-Fairfax things again, like when we said parking on this side of the street, and then, of course, people got all messed up because we wanted to be, you know, positive when we said something. Um, I take my bags to United. Many times, I forget them at home, or I forget them in the car, and so you pay for a bag. And I don't mind paying for a bag, and I can afford paying for a bag. But I'm with Barbara. I think it's gonna be a pain for a lot of people. I think they're not gonna think about taking their bag to, uh, they think about it more at the grocery store, but they're not gonna think about it for the small businesses to take a bag to get something put in it. So I just think it's.
Yeah, and also, just for clarification, that if you go, let's say, to Fairfax Lumber, and you want to buy a, a wrench, and you need a bag because you've forgotten, the smaller bags and those things have not been implicated in any of the bans that I've read about. So those bags are still available.
But usually, if it's something small, they usually don't take a bag. They take it with their hand and walk out.
Well, I guess I shouldn't say a wrench.
It's usually it's something big that they need a bag for, or multiple items that they need a bag for.
What you're saying, basically, if you bought a hundred nails, you would just get a small bag and you would have a hundred, so.
They'd come with a box.
And there are alternatives, like they give boxes for most people who are carrying out things.
Okay. Michael?
Uh, Mayor, are we legally precluded from identifying where those funds would go to? So if the town had some sort of ordinance or something where they said, for each bag, disposal bag, handled bag, however you wanna define it, that is consumed in our town as kinda like an end-use, could it be collected by the store, by their bag count, but then the funds returned to a specific account for the benefit of the town? So in other words, if you identified that, would it be legal?
I think Renee sort of alluded to this. Do you wanna pick it up, or go to a nonprofit or some?
Well, all I just wanna say is that there is a precedent for that, and I believe, Garrett, correct me if I'm wrong, that that is to the, at the discretion of, one, the retailer, and, two, the town and how we wanna write it. So it, there is leeway in, in, in that. So we would have to establish something as a town.
Well, that's why I'm asking about, like, bringing it forth in advance, so that it was very transparent, that everybody knew that, okay, these funds will go to here and not just absorbed into, let's say, the general fund, for lack of a better term, but into some specific acquisition of property, some specific helping the youth, but something specific, so everybody knew where those funds went with. They might be more inclined to support it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great item for discussion, in that it would be worth getting more information about, so talk further about that.
I mean, does that make it a fee then, instead of a charge?
So that case, I was, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but, um, the case from LA that I was talking about was exactly that. Um, the ordinance in LA made it a charge, but directed exactly where it would go, and how it would be used, et cetera. And, uh, the claim was that was really a fee in disguise. And they said, no, it's not, and it's fine. So, um, we can certainly provide more information on that, and I think it'll be in the staff report if we bring this item back. There, um, there's another issue connected with this also that we've been looking at. Um, the ban on plastic bags was enacted via initiative, and so you can't amend that. So we're not going to be amending the initiative. We're gonna be, uh, supplementing or complementary ordinance to it. Um, so that's another, another thing to look at. But all of that would be listed in the, um, staff report when we brought this back. All these issues would be fully discussed.
Please.
Hi, my name is Karen Begley. I am a Fairfax resident and a, uh, retail owner in town, right downtown on Bolinas. And while I don't give out a lot of bags, because my retail portion of my business is not large, I would find it a lot more comfortable asking for a charge from my clients if there was a fund that supported the town that people would feel more, like they were contributing to. So as Michael was saying, I, I strongly support the idea of coming up with some profit-based organization, or an organization that's gonna base from the profit, it's gonna, uh, benefit from the profit of this. It would be, as a retailer, a lot easier to promote the idea, instead of feeling somewhat embarrassed or embarrassing my customers about it. Also, from the other point of view, is 25 cents a bag, it costs me far less than 25 cents to provide that bag. So the, the available funds to fund whatever this was going to would be substantial, and I think it would add up quickly.
Just out of curiosity, can you even ballpark what a bag costs you?
I would ballpark a bag, including the stamp that I put on it with the name of my business, to probably be 15 cents or less. But I have a nice, rather hearty bag. So there's, uh, they aren't inexpensive bags that I buy. So.
And I'm sure that the supermarkets would, okay.
The paper is already significantly more expensive than the plastic.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're not inexpensive to provide as a store owner, but it would feel good for me to ask for the money, knowing that that money, I was helping to contribute, as is my client, towards something that's greater for the, for the community.
And what business do you have?
I own a hair salon. It's called Hairfax. So while our retail isn't big, and I will add also that, uh, we basically, we're retailing shampoos and styling products, which are often able to fit in somebody's bag. So we don't hand out a lot of bags. We provide them. We've got them. But we don't hand out a lot, because people generally have large handbags, or they're willing just to carry it. So it doesn't really match, this, this conversation doesn't entirely match like it would for the hardware store or the grocery store. But it would feel good if there was some kind of organization that was contributing and benefiting from this charge. I'd have to have a jar. I'd, I'd make it as simple as having a jar. Just, you know, put 25 cents in, or more, whatever you want. But there'd be a jar.
Okay.
I did wanna add for the record that, um, I did have informal conversations with either owner or manager of all three of the stores that would be affected, and, um, no one seemed to have any issue at all.
You spoke to Augie about this?
I spoke to Marcia.
Okay.
But she was going, yeah, it, this is informal.
Okay.
So let me not put words in anyone's mouth. But it was, it was an easygoing response.
Okay. All right, we will close the public here and bring it back. And if there's no further conversation, can we enunciate direction to staff? Renee?
Well, I mean, the first thing, I would like to know more about this idea that Michael and Kaz, Kaz have brought up, um, about what's possible to do with the revenue that we would generate. Um, I would like to know more about that before going into a more formal conversation.
Need from us as far as direction?
I think, maybe if I'm understanding correctly, that perhaps, I, I could ask what we need more direction, but perhaps rather than coming back to you with an ordinance, perhaps we come back to you with more information related to where you wanna go, so you can really see what the impacts are. Cause off the top of my head, well, maybe we can direct the funds to something. I do know enforcement is an issue. Tracking funds is an issue. Uh, I'm not too sure how other municipalities do that, really worry about that. That's why you just have the retailer collect it. But in terms of direction, we would like to know, are you saying, which business, which type of businesses would it apply to? Uh, I think a bag with a handle might be harder to enforce as opposed to if I use the model ordinance that the JPA came up with, um, issues like, is it, and it doesn't have to be boarded this way, but is it grocery stores and retail of a certain size, or is it everybody? Cause right now, the ordinance applies to everyone eating establishments. Is it not eating establishments, retail, uh, how much the fee should be?
Can I make a suggestion? We should see the model ordinance and maybe just get a, a two-page memo from council about what our options are as far as revenue stream, whether, where, where it can be directed, how it can be directed.
So maybe the best thing at this point is to bring back an item, uh, for consideration that has a, a discussion of, uh, some of the legal implications here, and, and also , um, options, things that you can do. And you can give direction based on that memo. Maybe that would be.
That sounds good. And if we could get the model ordinance in front of us, so we could take a look at what's out there, that would be great.
Do you need a motion from us, or?
No, just general direction.
Can I just ask one question? So would it be appropriate to also have not a lot of research done? It sounds like Renee's done a lot on the different amounts of charges, uh, going up from 5 cents, so we could have that for our consideration?
Of all the towns in Marin, or you mean in general in California?
Well, I think all the towns in Marin would be a good starting place, and maybe you could consult with Renee on, to provide us feedback on some of the ones that charge more within California.
Yeah, I don't wanna make it too costly of using up a lot of staff time.
Yeah, I, I'll get you the information from JPA. There is a website that you go to and lists the 90 cities and counties.
Yeah, that's where I went.
And what they do.
But Garrett, there's nothing in the, in the JPA's ordinance about the, the revenue-generating piece of it and allocating that, that funding.
No, they, they have the retailer maintain it.
That's only been done by individual stores, and I, I don't think it's been in any kind of a ordinance or required form.
Yeah, it, it, it has been down in LA.
Oh, it has?
Mm-hmm.
And how'd that go?
It was fine. It was challenged, and it was fine.
You could, you could give us the site on that case, too. That would be great.
And perhaps as a definition, it's, you know, bags provided at the, you know, point of sale, or something like that.
There are, there are many different ways to define it, yes.
Okay.
Thickness of the bag as well.
We look forward to your returning with, um.
Mayor, I have to say, one more thing, if I may.
Sure.
So the county did just complete the, um, the environmental impact report that covers as best as is possible to do, the different jurisdictions as they move through their bans. And so we do have that as a backup for any kind of a situation we may run into, and, um, it seems to be serving the other cities well so far.
Okay. Um, we're moving on now to our final issue of the evening. Michelle, you lost your bet. Uh, number four, the adoption of an administrative policy for the disposition of town surplus personal property, the issue that has befuddled us.
As the council aware, this item has been continued a few times, but now we get to discuss it, and maybe as a little background, back in 2012, this all started with the Parks and Recreation, oops.
I just wanna say, do you have a few minutes for a fishy story?
A brief one.
Okay. Uh, I was looking at the creek today, and I see places where the creek is obstructed, you know, from brush, and fish can't get in. But years ago, when we first moved over here in 1933, these creeks were full of steelhead. And now it's hard to find a little sticklehead. But, um, the potential is there in the Cota Madera Creek, San Sommo Creek, Fairfax Creek, for those steelhead to get back in here again. And on May 1st, when people are dancing around the Maypole here in Fairfax and San Sommo, all the boys were in the creek fishing, because that's when the season opened. And it would sure be nice to see all those steelhead get back into these creeks again. And it may take a little work. I've already talked to Trout's Unlimited, and they're gonna be doing some things to remove some of the obstacles so that the fish can get back in again. And, uh, it was really nice. I, I can remember as a little kid, going up the creek fishing and bringing home some nice trout. But, uh, now there's just nothing in there. But that, those two creeks, they just hold a great potential for the kids. And so maybe you just might wanna think about it, but whatever we can do to get the fish back in the creeks, and some of the things are like removing all the fish ladders, make it a, a creek that goes straight through without fish ladders. Because the fish ladders, well, they, they do some good when you clean them. But I, I can't get down and clean them anymore. And, Pete Aragoni used to help me, and he's useless. And so they're just, they get plugged up, and now the, whatever fish are in there can't really get up. They used to go all the way up to Cascades, and all the way up to the Elliott property, and spawn. And, uh, the potential is there. It's still there. And, uh, it'd be really nice to see the fish get back up here again. And I mean, you know, I watch steelhead, you know, like this, you know, jumping over those ladders down below the- jumping over those ladders down below the Town and Country Club. And the game warden used to help me clean out the ladders and stuff. But there's really no help there to do that anymore, but.
Could I just say something? We do have that, you know, the annual creek cleanup?
Well, no, that's okay. The creek cleanup is okay. But it's the first rains, first and second rains, when the creek gets up a little bit, and it plugs up all the ladders.
So you have to do it right after the?
Then you have to go down and clean them out, you know. And there's nobody that does it anymore.
Well, we should try to find some volunteers to do that because I know there's a lot of interest in doing that, so.
I think it would be popular.
It'd be nice to see the kids.
Oh, yeah. It'd be a beautiful thing to see.
If I may, the green fish ladder, I pull it out every time I can walk across concrete, so it's continually done. Lou used to come down there with his son and do this all the time. But it is done after, like, first rain, there's a stump now. It'll move within probably a day when it draws time to walk.
Okay. Thank you so much, Lou, for bringing that to us. Okay. It seems like we're forever challenged to get on to our discussion of surplus property. Garrett.
Okay, so maybe as a little background, back in 2012, the Park and Recreation Commission discussed the cleanup pavilion. Within that, they discovered that there was the, there were these army cots there. And so really, it stimulated the discussion that Park would like to actually dispose of the army cots to allow more storage room in the pavilion. And that's one of the items, is go ahead and approve the disposition of those army cots because as far as we could tell, there's really not a use. We try to put them on Craigslist or some other things. We could see what happens. But what that did was, that kind of brought up a broader discussion of should there be an administrative policy to allow staff to also dispose of personal property? And so that's what's led to this policy. And so for this policy, what we're proposing is staff be allowed to dispose of town personal property of less than $2,000. Do either, if it's over a certain threshold, we would go to Park to see if it should be donated to a nonprofit or so on. But I understand for this policy, there may have been some concern that was too broad of a policy. So staff just went to indicate it doesn't apply to vehicles. So if a vehicle is even worth a dollar, it still has to come to the town council for approval as a surplus vehicle. The other thing was a concern related to equipment that Public Works uses, just in the event that if we thought we were going to surplus something, that would limit our ability to, say, do asphalt or do patching on the street. So the policy would be that any Public Works property that we are considering surplusing, we actually would have put it in a new report. That report would be attached to the council's monthly financial reports. The staff report would point out that if there's things on the list you might want to take a look at, and we would not surplus that property until the council actually accepted the report related to Public Works equipment. So with that, that's the staff report.
Let's see, John.
Why are you looking at me? Yeah, I mean, I think, well, we've been around the block on this a couple of times. But there are concerns around things in the past that have been, you know, deemed surplus. Yeah, I mean, we had the street sweeper, I mean, a previous town manager wanted to get rid of that. And, you know, so then we don't have a street sweeper for emergencies. And we ended up fixing our street sweeper and not doing that. The same deal with the oiler, so we can fix the potholes. And so our Public Works guys took the key from us, saying, no, don't get rid of that, you know, and they figured out a way to weld a thing onto the truck so that they get all the tools needed to patch the potholes. So now we're patching our own potholes, saving a lot of money for the town. And basically, it's a question of oversight. And if we can basically just come up with a system so that, you know, we don't get rid of something because it might be inconvenient to have it around, but there's actually a good reason to have it around that hasn't been necessarily thought of.
That's every language.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to, you know, you.
Garrett.
Yes. Oh, before we surplus it?
Yeah.
I mean, we could do that with everything, although, I guess, what's the threshold for everything? A table, a filing cabinet?
Public work stuff.
Yeah, if it's just public work stuff, sure, yeah. We would put that in a report, and we wouldn't surplus it until you accepted the report.
I mean, I just, you know, I know John's, because it's hard to predict what could be deemed surplus. I mean, would it really be add to your burden just to give us a list of, this is our monthly surplus report?
I mean, it slows stuff down, I mean.
Where's that? For file, for junk?
For file cabinets and tables and broken lamps and stuff? I mean, we.
So right now, the way I understand it.
I guess not.
So the vehicles would not be surplus regardless of what they cost until you brought that to the council. Then you're saying on the monthly financial reports, you would include a list of everything that would go surplus that already went, that wasn't a Public Works piece of equipment or whatever. And then on that same report, you would include the list of Public Works stuff, and that that wouldn't go until we approved that report. But the list, the way I understand it, what you wrote here, is the finance report would have a list of stuff that you deem surplus under $2,000 that wasn't a vehicle, that wasn't Department of Public Works, and that you already surplus, like some broken file cabinet. There would also be a list of Department of Public Works stuff under $2,000 that you would like to surplus that wouldn't go surplus until we approved that report. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't think that's what he said. Well, I think I could see, I think I inadvertently wrote it that way. But the thought pattern really was surplus Public Works equipment would be put on the list. And we wouldn't surplus that or dispose of it until the council otherwise adopted the report.
Okay, so there was no intention of putting the broken lamps and that kind of stuff? You would just surplus out everything else. Other than Public Works, we wouldn't see anything.
Right.
I mean, you're not going to be surplusing broken lamps, you know. Broken lamps are going to be thrown away. So that's really not really an apt concern. I mean, the other thing is who determines the value as to being under $2,000? And maybe it's being too paranoid about it being abused. But I mean, that's honestly what I'm, I don't want to have happen, that there's a particular piece of equipment that is, there's a desire to get rid of it. And so it's deemed to be worth under $2,000 to sort of get rid of it, you know, without supervision or oversight. So I mean, not, I'm not expressing any distrust of you, but we've had experiences where, you know, things are not done correctly, and we find out after the fact. So how do you, how do we account for that? Or maybe we shouldn't have to kind of legislate that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think here's the difficulty is, it's always a matter of trust of your staff of how you implement your policy. I think in this case, a threshold, but how do you calculate that value? I mean, we would document the value, but the reality is, if something's like 20 years old, it's going to have a value, most likely, of zero. So that's why we were trying to address the concerns for those major products or equipment or vehicles that in essence, that if you kept, extended its life, there could be a cost savings to the town. So that's why it just limited to Public Works and vehicles, well, not apply to vehicles and Public Works equipment, regardless of any value would be put on the list to avoid that. Because I'm pretty sure you probably don't, aren't that interested in filing cabinets, fans, and tables, chairs?
Yeah, we're not, yeah. I mean, if something, a worn-out filing cabinet is one thing. But I mean, basically, that's the intent with what, you know, like the cots and stuff like that. You know, the cots are there because it's a Red Cross thing. I think they were there a lot longer than seven years. But, you know, that's just what the records we have. But I think what Larry's alluding to is, in the past, there, I mean, that oiler, which enables us to patch potholes, so, you know, for 700 bucks instead of 20,000 bucks, that was valued at $350, so that it would have been below, you know, well below the threshold. And that's, I don't think it's the situation here. I mean, I think basically, we're working together as a team pretty well. But I think institutionally, down the road, you know, I mean, none of us may be here at all.
We're going to exclude Public Works.
Right, I took Public Works equipment out.
We're going to exclude vehicles.
And exclude vehicles. And you would have to approve the Public Works surplusing before we did it, yeah.
Let me just see if there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this.
Thank you. A couple of comments before I make a suggestion. One, if the town receives some sort of public funds or specialty federal funds, because there's something I'm trying to get from a different county, there are different programs that sometimes specifically state to the disposition of that item. And it's part of the contingency of getting something, like if you're a museum, there's requirements when something is acquired. So really, what you're talking about is deacquisition. According to the IRS, if you donate something, so you separate it from the town, and that item is sold before 12 months, wherever you are in your depreciation scale or whatever value is signed to it for that value to pull off your books will be diminished to the fair market value. Should you keep that item over 12 months, then it doesn't matter if it goes up or down. And you might want to look at that since you're on a cash accrual basis for how you have your depreciation scales of different items. In addition, no, no, these are really big things. So what the town could do is whenever you have something, you put it into like a category, like a town surplus fund. And you let it sit there to mature a certain period of time to get past these requirements as well as gives everybody the opportunity to see what it is in case six people say, oh, we don't want it, and one person says they do. An example to that, just two years ago, the town of Fairfax was throwing over 1,100 maps, books, and things going back to 1925. I was asked to go up to the town pavilion and throw all that stuff away before they started working on pavilion. So I went up there, and I filled up an F-350 bed with a camper, three full loads, which just jammed in because Kathy gave me one day. When I went through those files, the first file that I gave back to the town was the files going back to the 1990s that showed everybody. So whoever was here 10 years ago, so I guess Larry and David, your financial statements that you presented to the town when you were going to run for office.
Difference between files and surplus property?
But there were maps.
Okay, I get it, I get it. There's a difference between the files of the town and a file cabinet in which it was located. And we're talking about the file cabinet, not the files within it. So I get all of that. So did you have a recommendation?
The recommendation is like when I've worked on different museum boards, that you have an entity or a fund that receives things, and you let those items basically mature for 12 months so you're not in violation of the IRS. Because I'm sure even your things that you're going to surplus are on depreciation scales.
Let me suggest to you why I would never agree to this. We have little staff, which is overworked, and this is an issue of of little import, except for ensuring that we do not get, inappropriately get rid of Public Works stuff.
But the reason this is easy, you just set an arbitrary value. You let it mature for 12 months.
I will not support that, okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Does somebody wish to, do you close the public hearing, bring it back to council? Would somebody like to make?
I mean, I think it's not a question of value, it's a question of utility. And in fact, I think files and records of the town have utility.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Should be scanned and maintained for.
You're talking about file retention. System is completely different than surplus property. It has nothing to do with surplus property.
Yes, it is. Would somebody like to make a motion on this at long-suffering policy? Who, holy fuck, I'll do it. I would.
I just, could I make one suggestion? Maybe we should just say $1,000, okay? And excluding Public Works, excluding vehicles.
It's on the second page.
Yeah, no, I know it's in there. I'm just saying.
Or things of historical value, you know, and basically have a report, you know.
You want a report?
Not a filing cabinet, no.
So paragraph seven there, lowering the seven and eight, actually, mentions the 2,000.
Right. If you just, if you adopt a policy and just say, keep the limit to $1,000, that we can adjust it. You don't have to wordsmith the whole thing.
Larry, please.
With that amendment, I would move approval of the, is it a resolution? Of that policy, direct staff follow that policy.
And also number one, which is approving the disposition of the army cots per the Park's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Ah, Bragman, Kohler, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Excellent news there.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We're adjourned. Everybody who's not feeling well? Hope you feel better.